Seven o'clock, I would like to call the May 14th College Place City Council meeting to order. Mr. Cleveland, would you please lead our pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and the faithful, loyal, and faithful citizens of all.
Ms. Nyhagen is asked to lead our invocation.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you that we can come for the business of the city. We thank you, Lord, for our city, that so many things are happening in the world. We're thankful for little College Place here, that we can show the area that we really love our city, and I thank you so much for our staff, Lord, they're so wonderful, and we appreciate them so much in this council, and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. So it's now our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on items not on the agenda, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing none, we force our consent agenda, that is approving this evening's agenda, approving council minutes from April 23rd, 2019, approving the special council minutes from May 7th, 2019, and approving the council workshop minutes from May 7th, 2019, and excusing the absence of Councilmember Selby.
I approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Mr. Peterson. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We do have three presentations this evening. I'd like to recognize Ms. Rhonda Gold, who's the executive director of the Walla Walla County Rural Library District, who's here this evening to chat with us along with this. You know, you may remember the background, when we did a community survey in 2017, really two items rose to the top of community desires. One of those was youth recreation programs, and Mr. Rosatello's done a marvelous job of working with the community, and we had our first summer recreation program last year, and expanded one this year. The second of those was access to library services for the community, and you may remember we did an offer last year to provide library cards for the community. I think we set aside $3,000 for library cards, and those were gone in less than four hours as people really wanted that "free" library card. Working through the issues with that, we've worked with the Board of the Rural Library District, and the county commissioners have authorized an election on August 6th of this year for the citizens to make the determination whether or not the city should join the Rural Library District. That then becomes part of a taxing district for the city, and there's a separate levy that doesn't affect our levy limit, our levy lid, for the city. It's a separate levy. Right now, I believe the Rural Library District levy covering the entire county is 47 cents per thousand of assessed value. That levy is determined by the county commissioners in consultation with the Library District Board, so that will come from that. We will be doing some public education. I believe we've included in your agenda item the information on what we can and can't do around elections. We can provide education for the community on what it all means, but we cannot support or non-support an election item. It's basically our role is to provide education for the citizens for their, so they can make a determination of whether they wish to press forward. Ms. Gold, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
I don't have anything written in comment form this evening. Thank you for having me here again this evening to chat with the city council about the library. The one thing I would like to stress is that we are ready to provide service as soon as the election is certified, and that would entail provision of cards for all residents of College Place, availability of all of our services, all of our materials, whether it's in print or digital format, access to additional programming and things like that. I can take some questions if anyone has questions. What I would like to also say too is that the Library District does plan to be present at the farmer's market this summer, and we will, of course, be nonpartisan as well. My job is not to really, well, not at all, to sway anyone's opinion either way. I'm just there to provide information about what we can provide as far as services go. We do have a rather robust collection with the addition of about 80,000 digital items in the past year. That has to do with including Gutenberg materials, which are items that are no longer under copyright into our catalog as well as what the state provides us in terms of electronic books and music and audiobooks. Any questions?
You do have property within the city.
We do.
What are the library's plans for that property?
Our plan is to, if the election passes, our plan is to build on our property that is, I'm directionally challenged, I believe it's just south of here. Thank you. I guess I'm not that directionally challenged as I think I am. But our plan is to move our branch that's over at Plaza and combine that with our service center and build on that location, so we would be a presence right on College Avenue here in College Place, just adjacent to the high school. Yes?
What's the total amount per year that the levy would bring in, dollar amount? Do you have an estimate on that?
Estimate wise, I believe it is about $300,000 from the community.
And if I understood the Union Bulletin article, the lease is expiring on your Plaza area, is that correct?
Our leases for Plaza and for our service center building both expire around the same time in about three years, so.
Oh, in three years?
Uh huh. So timing wise, it couldn't be any better as far as we're concerned to, you know, work towards, you know, doing some strategic planning and including citizens and city council in what kind of building would go on that location if the election passes.
So you would accumulate about 1.2 million in levies or maybe a little bit south of that before you actually build in four years? So we would be paying the levy. If you don't build, the nearest location other than Plaza for College Place residents would be where to go rent a?
We could get materials to our service center location on Jade Street.
Jade Street?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
At least that's the plan right now. We've talked about doing a kind of a pop-up library situation here in town as well if the election passes.
Thanks.
Other questions?
I'm sorry, clarification, because I was taking that as another question you asked. Did you say it was going to take three years for the new building to be built, is that what I understood?
Our existing leases expire in about three years, so I would hope that we would be in a new building well before that three-year period of time expires.
And are there already set plans for what type of building or the building of, you know, the designs, all that already ready?
Nothing. Nothing's ready. And it's, I believe, and maybe you could correct me if I'm wrong, I believe our lot is zoned commercial, so there's some opportunities there that could be mixed use or something like that as well. Or we could include something with the school district. You know, we need to talk about what the community would like and what would best serve everyone.
Thank you.
The other thing I'd like to point out too is that we do have a pretty robust capital fund already established, and that is also after we've renovated our Burbank Branch and our Prescott Branch in the last few years. Right now, we are looking at Tucci, well, not necessarily expanding that, but doing some kind of building project there, and the funding is available for this.
How large is the lot for the location you're looking at on College Avenue?
Our lot over there is, I believe, just under an acre.
Okay. That should be pretty sufficient then for parking and building that we need your needs?
Yeah.
Would you be looking at like a one-story, two-story, 80-story?
Well, you don't know.
Probably not 80.
Probably not 80, but, you know. And we could do, you know, we could do a multi-level facility, especially if it's mixed use of some kind.
Mr. Cleveland?
Another question here. I think the library is carrying all forms of media, and I know video games are more and more popular with younger kids. Is that something that you guys carry or no?
We don't carry video games, you know, like the Xbox or I guess PlayStation or whatever they are, but we can get them through interlibrary loan services if somebody really wants something.
Thank you.
Yeah. I know the military bases were, I worked at Joint Base Lewis McCord a few years ago, and video games were a huge, huge checkout item for us there, and I know we do do, we do do a lot of interlibrary loan with JBLM, so it's well within the realm of possibility.
Can you tell us, do you have numbers right now, the number of College Place residents that visit the Plaza service location?
Not per se. That is not necessarily something we track.
Okay.
I could probably get it if I wanted to.
It'd just be interesting to understand the utilization, the current utilization right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And a lot of that, you know, we don't necessarily know for sure because a lot of our services don't require a library card. If someone wants to come in and use the internet or use the wifi, we don't track that by individuals' residence. Did I just hit something up here?
No.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Other questions? Mr. Cleveland?
Now, I'm a little bit curious. You said that computer services, computer access is essentially free of charge.
Uh huh.
Are there other services that you would provide free of charge?
If someone would like to participate in our book discussion groups or summer reading program, summer reading program is starting next month, and that is for people of all ages, whether it's, you know, it's birth to end of life. So we do do a lot of things like that. We do a lot of outreach in the community. We are participating in the Ducky Derby this weekend, so we'll be there giving away books to kids, anybody that comes up to chat with us and, you know, wants to talk libraries, we'll be there. And we'll be giving away books to anybody that comes to our, I don't know if we'll have a tent or table or what exactly we'll have, I guess it depends on the weather. So we'll be there to talk about that and mainly to talk about summer reading program. Other things that we do, we've got some, any kind of like craft programs or storytimes that we have, those are open to everyone, not necessarily folks that are library card holders. I'll give you my business card when we're done here.
This is only tangentially related, but I'm curious about historical information that you keep in your library system about the area here, like what kind of stuff do you have, like an archive? Do you collect, do you have information on like, let's say, like I think I've seen like in different libraries, pictures of aerial photos and whatnot, but could you tell us a little bit about like maybe some of the historical information you have about College Place?
I don't have any historical information about College Place, but that would be something that, you know, we would love to have and make available to the community, whether it's in its original format or if we have it digitized. We have had some digitization grants in the past, and some of the materials that we have from Prescott have been digitized, and they're available, I believe, on the state library's website. And we do have a pretty good collection at the service center of items from Prescott, ranging from old yearbooks to photos to newspaper clippings and things like that. So.
I'm out.
You're out, okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Gold? Well, thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you. And next month, I hope to have a flyer available and some more information on, we just completed our state report for, our annual report for the state library, so it's still kind of raw data that we're muddling through yet, so hopefully I'll have some interesting statistics for you if you are interested next month or at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we do have two proclamations this evening. First of those is for National Public Works Week, whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as waters, sewers, streets, wastewater treatment, engineering, equipment maintenance, and solid waste collection and disposal, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design, construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works professionals, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel in staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Harvey Crowder, Mayor of the City of College Place, Washington, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to the 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week in the City of College Place and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, given under my hand and seal as the mayor of the City of College Place this 14th day of May 2019. Mr. Hartwig, can I give you this proclamation? Feet. Thank you.
Robert deserves to come up here too.
And our second proclamation is May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and May 12th to the 18th as National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that falls as Police Week, and whereas a memorial service first began in 1982 as a gathering in Washington DC of approximately 120 survivors and supporters of law enforcement, and then decades later, that's really an interesting statement. Do people survive law enforcement?
There's a couple in the room right now.
Survivors and supporters of law enforcement, and then decades later, this event grew into a major commemorative event at our nation's Capitol across the country during National Police Week. And whereas this week, tens of thousands of law enforcement officers from around the world converge on Washington DC to participate in a number of planned events to honor those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice, and whereas many jurisdictions around the world pause to honor their police, and whereas the College Place Police Department officers and staff work rigorously every day to fulfill the responsibilities of preserving life and property in the City of College Place, now therefore, I, Harvey Crowder, Mayor of the City of College Place, Washington, do hereby ask all College Place citizens to join together to proclaim May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and May 12th to the 18th, 2019, as National Police Week in the City of College Place, and urge all to join together in thanking our College Place police personnel for their dedicated performance of duties to keep us safe, given under my hand and seal as the mayor of the City of College Place this 14th day of May 2019. So next on our agenda is a public hearing, Community Development Block Grant 2019 application, sidewalk gas. Mr. Rosatello?
Thank you. This agenda item is repackaged from last year as Community Development Block Grant. We compete against several other cities across the state through this. In our situation, it's a little more complicated than most of these because you have a population of 51% low-mathered income for it to be easy. Otherwise, you have to argue for the grant via census block groups, which the way College Place, our demographics are, we have to justify it through the block group, census block group standpoint. So this would put at least sidewalks on one side of a roadway, basically on Second Street between Kami and Davis, Davis, Whitman to a little bit past Second Street, and then several on B, there's gaps between Fifth and Sixth, Seventh and Tenth, 12th and 13th, and then areas on Eighth and 12th as well. These areas were chosen because if you look at the maps, there's only two census block groups that are above that 51% LMI threshold. The one of them is basically along College Avenue going from Fourth to 13th, and it zigzags all over the place, so like you can't justify Birch Street, for example, because that street actually straddles two block groups and the other one doesn't count. The second block group is up by the university. I believe we'll stand a better chance this time because when I had a conference with the state last year, they said one of the reasons we didn't get the grant is while Walla Walla University said they were going to give us the right of way needed for the sidewalk, we didn't have the official deed or recorder then, it was just a lot of them saying, hey, we'll give it, but there was no official deed. And since that point, we worked with the university where it went through their various channels, and essentially they gave over the needed right of way to us because that was the major sticking point the last time with the state. So I think we're in a better condition this going around.
So I'd like to open the public hearing on Community Development Block Grant 2019 application. Anybody wishing to testify for or against the Community Development Block Grant, please step to the podium, state your name and address. And a second call, anybody wishing to testify for or against the Community Development Block Grant 2019 application, please step forward to the podium, state your name and And one final call, anybody wishing to testify for or against the Community Development Block Grant 2000 application, please step forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion?
Could you expand it 51%? I'm sorry, that went by, just real briefly, I'm sorry, that was based on?
That's basically low-mathered income, pretty much populations like the low, median income in census block groups, which are smaller than triacs.
So I did hear that, they're drilling down into neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah. It makes the applications much more of a pain.
I see. I thought I understood. Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to action items, Mr. Rosatello?
This is just a resolution saying you're good with filing the grant application for what I just mentioned.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello, Mr. Cleveland?
I just want to say, looking at the list of proposed sidewalks, that they're desperately needed in those locations, so here's really hoping that everything goes smoothly. Fingers crossed.
These are our only means, it's just, this is what we can, this is what we can get through this media.
I'm sorry, did we fill that process correctly? Did we just vote on the action?
Close the public hearing.
We voted to close the public hearing. Thank you, I'm back.
Okay. Other questions?
Well, if there aren't any other questions, I will motion to approve Resolution Number 19-017 authorizing the city administrator to submit a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, grant application for sidewalk gap construction in qualifying census block groups.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Mr. Bobbitt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rosatello. Mr. Gordon, Washington Traffic Safety Commission School Walk Route Improvement Project Grant Award and Two Preliminary Engine Studies and Designs of the City's Sidewalk System. Thank you, Mayor. I could say it all in one breath.
That's good. I'm not sure I actually authored that one this time, and so I'll give credit where credit's due in just a minute, but I have good news for council tonight. The Washington Traffic Safety Commission, WSTC, their main purpose in life is to reduce traffic fatalities and serious injuries, and they offer grants. And if you recall, back on March 12th, 2019, you guys gave us, the council gave staff the authority to go out and apply for a grant from WTSC, and we were successful. Actually, what I did is as soon as I got your authorization, I immediately turned and gave it to our new engineering stormwater technician, Rob Bensley, who's here tonight. In two days, he will have been here five months, and he was successful in running this application, and they're offering to award this grant, and so we're bringing that to you tonight. This is related to the sidewalks that we're talking about tangentially a little bit. This is a pre-designed grant that allows us to assess our current situation in the city, what we have, what we don't have, what's going to work, what's not going to work, what costs are, and then ultimately with that information, we're in a good position to go out for more grants, for more design, for more construction throughout the city. So this is a pre-designed construction grant, and you can read through the agenda bill there in terms of all the different areas it covers. So tonight, what we're asking for is that you would be willing So tonight, what we're asking for is that you would be willing to allow us to accept, staff to accept, the $67,500 grant. There's $7,500 we need to put on the table for that, but the bulk of that would come from the WTSC. And then the second part of that motion is to allow us to go out for... To advertise for preliminary engineering from consultants to begin the process of actually using that money to come up with preliminary design. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those.
Questions for Mr. Gordon. Mr. Bobbitt?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize city administrator to sign statement of acceptance of award letter provided by the Washington Traffic Safety Commission.
It's been moved by Mr. Bobbitt.
A second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And now...
Do you want to do this, sir? I'd like to make a motion to authorize Engineering Department to go to bid for preliminary engineering studies and designs for the city's sidewalk infrastructure system.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bobbitt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Ms. Kilgore, travel advance account balance.
Good evening. So historically, in our travel checking account, we have had a $2,000 kind of maintained balance. So we write checks and then we would deposit back to that $2,000 balance. But as of late, that has become inadequate. We have been having to monitor that account very closely to avoid overdrafts just because of the amount of travel and education and training and stuff that our employees have been attending. So this is a resolution to increase that static account balance up to 4,000 from 2,000.
Questions for Ms. Kilgore.
So employees typically are going to travel, they do not... Well, do they not typically put it on their own credit card and ask for reimbursement? Or is this for cases where that's not possible?
Yeah, so what we usually try to do is issue per DM checks beforehand because it just saves a lot of administrative time of people having to collect receipts and make sure they got detail and turn everything in, and if there's things missing, then we have to, you know, fill out a special form for the auditors, and it's just a real nightmare with the amount of travel that we have going on. So we try to have people fill out request forms ahead of time to just pay them per DMs and just go and don't have to worry about it after that. On the occasion that they forget to do that, or for some reason there's an unexpected expense, then yes, they do pay for it themselves personally and come back and ask for reimbursement. We try to handle it on the front end to just avoid a lot of headache later.
A quick follow-up question that is not really relevant. Does the city have a city credit card or a P card? Is that used for travel and also sometimes...
Yeah, so like if somebody goes just to a conference or a meeting for a day and they just need to buy gas on their way to or there usually, or maybe a lunch out of town, then they'll take a card with them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So what is this account used for? Is this the account that's issuing the per DMs?
Mm-hmm.
Why does it have to be a separate account?
We have a separate... I'm not sure historically why we did that, but it has a different sequencing number of the checks and I think maybe just to track, for tracking purposes. I don't know. That was done in the 90s, so...
It's how we've always been doing it.
It is. You know, that's a good...
I'd be curious to see if this may that we need to continue for tonight there.
Well, I'm thinking that it's also a count that's reconciled because obviously if there's issuance and then if it's a separate, so it's outside of your typical cash management or checking, so it's a separate account where you keep track of travels.
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody were issued, didn't go, issued exceeding, issued...
True.
Yeah.
That's probably why it was set up.
Yeah.
If it works, it works.
Ms. Hernandez?
So you mentioned that you need to closely... Currently, you need to closely monitor the balances. Has there been occurrences of overdrafts or fees?
No, there have not. We're trying to avoid that. And actually, I actually did sort of on a... I sort of made an executive decision on April 30th to go ahead and increase the balance and then ask for permission retroactively. It didn't work. Just to avoid any, you know, problems, so I can decrease it again if you don't agree, but...
Mr. Peterson?
I've moved to retroactively approve. (laughter).
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Any further discussion?
(inaudible).
Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You're now out of trouble.
Thank you.
All is well.
Man.
So we have four administrative reports this evening. Mr. Rosatello, revision of Title 13 Public Services to the College Place Municipal Code.
Okay, I'll be brief with this because I really went longer at the workshop. What this is, is it's a revision of our Title 13 Public Services is what... Which is what governs our utilities to water, wastewater, and stormwater. Line share, the code actually was not updated since 1987, and as such, a lot of it just fell off, especially related to state statutes where things change, and then there really wasn't dovetailing back to what currently exists in state statute. So I'll briefly touch over the changes. There's a PowerPoint PDF that's called Utility Code Revision in your Word docs. It just summarizes the salient points of this because as you'll see in the Word document, it's a 131-page document, so it's a big document. For 1304, the water service system, it's really the revisions of definitions such as like dwelling, also the enabling statute, citing out the State Administrative Code statutes, RCWs related to water system plans and capital facility plan. Also, we clean up the utility oversizing statute, which is if there's a development going on in the periphery and we know that there's going to be growth in the future, and it would make sense to oversize the infrastructure that the difference between what the development needs and what our needs are, we would reimburse the difference. Also, in the future, just that there would be accounts for... Separate accounts for the water meters, the meter test fee that that gets referenced to a fee resolution because we have been in the past where a lot of this was cited to hard dollar figures, says 1304. The second slide, just non liability, and then a big thing is removing the water shortage revision, and that comes back into another chapter section later because typically when you run a water system of our size, the state likes seeing that you have various levels of emergency that are pretty well stated in the code. And the way our old code was is it basically just said, we have the right to do what we need to do if we need to do it. It didn't really say what. It just said that we could do something. So the new code goes into levels, and we'll get into that a little later. Page 12, also removing the service outside city. We made that its own little chapter, and so that way people can actually follow along and know where all this stuff is at. Page 15, adjust that for the water accounts, the owners are liable, and then also putting in sections that dovetail to RCWs such as we do have the ability of required cash payment if we need to, for fire protection, naturally water's free on that, but you have to put that in the code section, and then unit charge protocol on some of the older structures where it goes from multifamily to one family and back again, that there's a clean process for dealing with that. And page 16, revenue requirements, removing that because it was dovetailing back to revenue language from the 80s. Okay, good. Chapter 1305 Emergency Water Conservation, this more clearly establishes the what happening if we need to. So there's an enabling clause for it, and then there's three stages of rationing, mild, moderate, and severe. Also, within this section, there's an area that pretty much frames the communication mediums for communicating emergency conditions to our customers. And then there's a section where it enables the ability through city council to develop conservation programs because over time, other cities to the east of us like Pullman, for example, because of their decline in aquifer, Department of Health started working with them to do like low-flow toilet rebates and wisecape rebates and things like that. Should we ever need to get to that point, that would enable that discussion here. Next one, that outside city limits, that wasn't buried within the middle of the earlier water statutes. Now it's its own chapter section. That's how it is in most other cities, and it just clearly says the authority, what the application is, the charge for water and sewer service, and per basically state statute, if it's outside the city, we do reserve the ability to do one and a half times what we charge inside the city. We don't. It's just saying that we reserve the ability, and that would be in the fee schedule anyhow. That's how we do that. And then utility extension agreement, just clearly citing that. And then page 33 goes, and it just dovetails various state requirements for connecting for public health, safety, and environmental, and that one specifically deals with earlier statutes that we removed that no longer exist that were referenced in the code. Next, 1308 Wastewater Service, again updating definitions because definitions of dwelling as well as director changed because back in the day when we ran wastewater is its own department, as you all know, we contracted out to CH2M or Jacobs Group, so the director now references Public Works Director. The additional hookups, that section's in there, septicage rates, we removed that because there was reference to rates that we charge. I believe that one was in the early 90s where it was referenced, and naturally it's outdated. Page 67 more clearly defines the fees, and then page 68 dovetails where it calls back to our general penalty in nuisance codes because in the older codes, it basically set forth some parameters for nuisance, but it actually referenced RCW that no longer exists, so... Next one, 1312 Wastewater Pretreatment, again the director definition was changed, prohibited discharge standards, added some ones that are now considered prohibited discharges. As you can see there, as far as ashes cinders, improperly cut garbage, wastewater which can cause harm per city engineer, and then pesticides. Show cause hearing, that ties it to a hearing examiner. Prior to that, it was pretty much the mayor assigned and staff, and most of these, they have a hearing examiner system. Everything like that goes to a hearing examiner. And then page 98, the civil penalties, again instead of trying to cite RCW that no longer exists, it ties back to our nuisance and penalty code. Chapter 1314 Water and Sewer Laycomagagreements, again it references the enabling RCW which actually exists and that specifies the city administrator's authority in this. Storm and surface water utility, this one was created last year. We just add some revisions so that way mirrors the other utilities where it classifies delinquency charges and liability for payment bill. Also, as far as property exemption, we remove city-owned properties. Now what that means is our roadways and transportation networks, those are conveyance systems of the stormwater utility, so we aren't having to pay for that, but like property, like for instance, the public works yard, city hall properties that are actual properties, we basically pay ourselves for that in account in terms that the state mandates that. And then also page 111, that just gets a credit eligibility such as that if we're given credits on the stormwater utility for a facility, it has to be stamped by an engineer. We just can't say, hey, we think it's a stormwater facility. It has to have engineering plans. And then page 112 references RCW which enables low income discount. Illicit discharge, we say prohibited discharges, a lot of that is verbatim from Department of Ecology. And then page 117, this was referenced a little bit way back when we talked about the stormwater utility plan, but it's just with ammo waste, which is if you're on a property that's going right along a creek, you need to do your best basically to clean ammo excrement so it doesn't end up in a creek and then pollutes the waterway because it's part of the stormwater thing that we have to do. We're testing our water basically at the ends of the city, so that is one of the things that we have to do and that showed up, so that's what references ammo waste. Next.
Right. It's helpful.
And then Economic Development Infrastructure Program. Now this, I would say over the years unofficially this existed, but really there wasn't anything really spelled out which I have found concerning, and this is just where let's say you have a development going in the future and to make it go as well as help your current residents, the city's cost sharing and infrastructure development. This is basically spelling out one that's appropriate, and then also the will run through Economic Development Commission for review and then city council for ultimate approval, and it just spells out the information needed for consideration. And then basically the fact that we can present the various funding mechanisms to go fund that, but it would go through the ed tech and then for council's ultimate decision. And then this also ties back to the RCW that allows this, so it just has a more clearly defined process, which I think is a good thing, so... And with that, that is the quotes notes of the 131-page and other.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello. Ms. Hernandez?
Way back on page 14.
Okay.
It was regarding the addition of budget payment plan.
Yeah.
You kind of skipped over that one, so is that pertaining residential users or what is that regarding...
The payment plan RCW, they have ties to residential users, yeah.
And it's not something we have right now? Is that what you're... It's being proposed to add it, or we just need it in the...
We basically need it in the code. I mean, per the state, you need to be doing that. It says we inhabit, I mean, we're in there in our financial framework, the code, that there was no reference to it at all, so you need that in there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Rosatello?
I've got a question or a comment. I appreciate, Mike, you and your staff going through 1987 when it was last time this was touched or updated.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's a lot of important work, and I know during the workshop, we're going to do actually quite a bit more detail than we did today on this, just and, yeah, I just appreciation from all of us as far as to root these out and clean them up and get them lined up. Thank you.
You're here. Other questions for Mr. Rosatello? This has been almost a year in incubation.
Wow. But we don't have to do it for another 30?
We're going to do this every year. All 131 pages. Thank you, Mr. Rosatello.
If anyone has any, it's let me know, but otherwise this will go for action the next May then because especially that water conservation code, we really need that in place because as I said, right now legally, if you look at our codebook, it just says we can have the ability to do whatever pretty much, so... can have the ability to do whatever pretty much, so.
So moving on, Pacific Power Electric Vehicle Charging Station.
Oh, revised standards.
Oh, I was, Mr. Gordon.
Getting ahead of yourself.
I had my hopes up there for just a one moment. And you will soon, too soon, have your hopes up. But anyway, just like we're, Mike's updating the code, we're also updating our standards as we go. And this is kind of a regular process we're going through. And tonight, it's just kind of giving you some information, some background. It is a work in progress. Lisa, if you could maybe pull up exhibit two, we'll get started there. And what we're doing is on these standards, these are standards that appear on our drawings or our reference prior drawings, and they basically dictate what goes in the ground in terms of city infrastructure. And so we try and make sure that when a developer gets out there, they read and they understand and they're clear and we get what we want. So with that said, let's go ahead. I just want to point out a few of these things. Really what started this particular series of changes off was the fact that we have, let's see if this works. Is that we have more than a couple of color signs out there. If you recall, a couple of you probably noticed that at Homestead, they have brown ones. Those were actually specifically approved for their development. However, it leaves you kind of wondering what, where you are because they're brown and everything else is green. So we, this was our standard. And what we did is we added this particular language down here. We already were talking about white lettering on reflective green as our standard. However, the N U T C D, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, it's a federally dictated standard for colors for all our signs on highways and so forth, we're referencing that now. So that whenever we get a, when we request signs, we make sure we get the right color, which has not been an issue in the past, but just for the sake of being clear and making sure that we get all those bright sign colors on our signs, we've made that change. Lisa, if you go to the next standard. Exhibit three, these are general construction notes that we typically reference in all of our drawings and plans that have to do with city infrastructure. And there's a number of changes that we're looking at. Not a lot, but if you go to number twelve, I think it'd be the second page there, right here. What we're trying to do is we're trying to limit our exposure and our effort directly onsite of a project. The building official obviously inspects the building itself. We focus for the most part on public infrastructure, like the water and the sewer and the streets and so forth. But that area in between, that portion and the building is kind of more in the jurisdiction of the owner. And so we're kind of backing off a little bit of that. This particular statement, I will probably amend this a little bit to reflect the fact that we're still requiring some certifications, say for example, for parking lots and for storm facilities onsite. So we will be getting engaged. Right now, what we're proposing we add is city inspection outside of buildings is limited to facilities in the right of way. All other onsite inspection compliance, including A V A compliance, is a responsibility of the owner. However, that said, there is still some responsibility we have in terms of gathering certifications, making sure things are done correctly. And I have, the next change we have alludes to one of those. Lisa, why don't we go to the next page? Number eighteen, I've added this statement here that when we, upon completion and prior to final approval of the work, the owner or his agent shall provide the city with stamped as-built drawings. That was already there. But we're including certification that the private facilities comply with our parking lot code and that we also get, and with the American Disabilities Act. So we're asking their engineer, when they get done, certify that you guys constructed it the way it is, the way you've designed it, and make sure that it's compliant with the A D A. One of the reasons we're doing that is just has to do with having the amount of feet on the ground in terms of being able to inspect stuff. We just don't have the resources all the time to do that. And so by asking their engineer, who's already involved in the project, to go out, check it, make sure, get their certification, we don't have the extra cost and time and effort involved with going out and checking all of that. So that's a kind of a pragmatic approach. And it's the same approach we're taking to stormwater.
Are those, as-built, are those available to the fire suppression and to emergency services in the case of a disaster or a fire in larger buildings? Or how is that retrievable to see what it looks like actually inside of a building?
Right now, it would be underneath where we're sitting and some flat drawers, but we do, we have started to combine, collect those electronically. And we are starting to place those, the hope is on G I S so that they can click on it and see it. And ultimately, in a perfect world, they'd be on the route, they could click on the drawings and get a feel for what's out there and be able to arrive with a little bit more information in their hands. We're not there, but, but that's, that's a long time.
Thinking about it.
Yeah. It's a good question. Okay. Okay, the next thing we've done here is in number, can we go back just for a second, As you, as you are very well aware, we have a new stormwater utility. And so what we're asking here is that, what we do is we make sure that when they get done with a stormwater facility, the engineer goes out and checks, make sure that it's constructed and it will work as it was designed. We want that before we issue final occupancy on the facility. So we don't have people living in it without completed stormwater facilities. So we're just clarifying that there as part of it. So that's one of the other changes. And Lisa, now we could go to the next exhibit. Appreciate it. Exhibit four. I promise this will be shorter than Mike's presentation, which I thought was very well done considering the amount of material, so.
He's going to do this twice though, so.
Yeah. If we go to the very end, note thirty-two, this is another stormwater related comment. Again, related to the fact that we're upping our game in terms of our stormwater utility. When you do a construction project, you're trying to retain all your stormwater onsite. You don't want to get tracked out. You want to control that. Best management practices related to that are called out explicitly here. And what we're saying is you've got to have, be controlling your stormwater on your site if you're going to be constructing. And if you don't, and you've got stuff going everywhere and it's going in your neighbor and everything else, we can actually stop the work. So that's a, that's a, an addition to our current code and it explicitly spells that out. The best management practices in terms of silt fences and construction entrances where you have to clean off your tires and tracking out, taking care of all that, we already have that as a standard. We're just want to make sure that they're clear that this is important to us and you need to make sure that they're actually observing that, so. Are there any questions on this one? Okay. We'll go to the last one. This is a very simple change. The manufacturer changed their luminaire model number, and so we updated our luminaire model number. And that's it.
Questions for Mr. Gordon?
Of course, this is last, I don't know, I have to comment on it. Have you had to do much adjusting on light as far as some refract out the houses? Has it been pretty simple so far? What are your, what are your thoughts on this, on this process?
Aside from the original adjustments we made during the project when Scott Lake was here, I know of no adjustments that we've made.
Wow.
Yeah. Mike, have you heard it?
No.
No. So I think the cutoff shields are working. Yeah, it seems to be working well.
There were a couple on the Pacific Power lights, the wooden pole ones around town. Because depending on what angle you're on, those L E D lights get a little weird.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Neat.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Rosatello, Pacific Power Electric Vehicle Charging Station.
Okay, thank you. With this item, Pacific Power has started a new grant in technical assistance program where they pay for fast chargers as well as the ability to construct them, install them, and then they provide technical assistance for where placed and essentially how assigned it and so forth. So I was approached by Bill Quandons about protesting this program because it's brand new on the Washington side of the border. So technical assistance wise, we did get acceptance of that program. So they're writing a report now for where placed on the city hall campus. And the idea would be in August, they'll have a call for grants for a fast charger and then we could apply for that. Now, just to provide everyone an update on the Columbia REA one from way back when, believe it or not, that it is actually moving toward finality after all this time. So it, so it has been delivered to the R E A. The thing that we're waiting for at the moment is there's some sort of hangup at the university's master planning committee. Because it, well, at first I was told that they approved it and they were hooking it up at the parking lot by the alumni center because they were doing electrical work. And then apparently some on that committee, for some reason, pushed back on that. So even though it was earlier approved, so what I've been told is either it's going there or it's going at the gas station. But I've been assured that it's going somewhere this month. But the chargers are actually like here in the valley now, so that's a good first step, I think, so.
Mr. Peters?
Mike, were either those, is rapid charge the correct?
Yeah.
Are either those rapid chargers?
The ones by R E A are like level two ones, so they aren't like rapid charged, but it's like about like four hours or so to charge. The ones with Pacific Power, which would be through the grant program, that would be the rapid charge. So that would be like within twenty minutes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Rosatello? Mr. Andrews?
I'm not stopping now. Now that I know what to ask. So I understand for the Pacific Power, it's a grant program. Is there any expected cost to the city?
So with the, so with the Columbia REA one, there was an initial cost for the chargers, some match on the Columbia REA grant that they gave us. As far as electricity wise, that's being hooked up onto the university's meter because they view that as why I've been told, like a community service to get people to be walking around the campus area and so forth. So with the Columbia REA charger, that's not going to cost us anything. It will be available for the community and it's going to be hooked into their system. Now, the Pacific Power one, if you all allow me to put in for that, that one is going to be one where it's in this like program where essentially you would like have an app and that they has like credits on it and you could purchase the electricity with credits. So that would be on the customer, that one.
Okay.
Other questions?
Can I ask another related question?
Oh, you, of course you can.
The solar power, how, what is your thought, where is that at right now?
So the solar ray project from the state, that grant, we did not get because in that, in that grant example, they were saying that because it was new construction, they felt it didn't qualify. However, Pacific Power has a blue sky grant program where they pay for the whole thing. And in our case, that program has been undersubscribed for years where they haven't been able to get enough folks to put in for it. So I was told by Bill Quandons that that should not be much of an issue to get it going in this year. That grant program is due around August, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Last but not least, the city flag project.
Yeah. This is us providing update for everyone. So with the city flag project, we did repackage the survey to have the top four flags as well as what the various designs mean and so forth. And there definitely was a deviation in scores this go around where the top one had a median score, but a little bit north of seven, and then the other ones were really low six and fives. So you can, and keep in mind the white color, that's just trying to bring from PDF, that's not part of the flag. But that, that is the flag designed by two of the Washington State University students. They're all going to make edits to it, but that was the one where at least in our survey results, that had the greatest deviation where it was above the others by about a full point.
You know, Mike, I was reminded, just my own personal take on it all, we had some of our discussions about, you know, wording and, and things that we might like on there that represent the city. But it is interesting, when you think about flags, many times I was reminded that when you look at a flag, you're looking at what it looks like maybe from a hundred yards away, a mile away, probably not a mile away, but, and you're really not going to see the detail unless you're standing next to the flagpole looking up at it. So you see a lot of flags where it has basic designs, not a lot of complicated designs. I was just, I guess I put that down in my two, my two cents on that where a more basic design that can be observed from a distance, not necessarily up close.
Do you have the?
Go ahead.
Numbers of how many participants voted the second time around?
That, I have that in here, one hundred and thirty-two.
Okay.
Hundred and thirty-two, so based on population from office, financial management, that's one point three eight percent of the nine thousand five hundred and ninety people here. And not only was that online, but then we had flyers up at Andy's Black Cup and Rogers Bakery and then the, it was also emailed out to the various schools so they could participate. And then there were flyers with Q R codes put up around town, too.
That was the four?
Yeah.
Or was that? Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, I, I did that with the bigger one, too, but I did it again with the, and this one had more people participate than the earlier one.
Oh, it did?
Because the earlier one had like ninety-eight, I believe, so.
Yeah, I was just wanting to be just as many participated, but more.
It's like asking everybody what they want for lunch.
Yeah.
Yeah. When we went up to Washington State with the, with the four top scores, when you take a look at their, their rationale for the design, I think it, you know, they, they, the background color, I mean, it's, well, it's in the package here, but the background color is the Blue Mountains, the, the lines across the bottom of the three tribes, the golden leaves. I thought this was an interesting, an interesting approach. This shape of the leaves is taken from the shape of the Sette Adventist logo. And the seven leaves represent both Sette Adventist Church and the seven rivers that surround the area. The curved, the curved blue and golden lines, the Blue Mountain range, and then the two stems represent the two school districts in the city's values. And I thought that was a pretty creative way of, of looking at how do you design something that's there.
How do you, as a non-Adventist member of the community, view that as a symbol in the flag?
It's our heritage. It's, 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 it's the heritage of the community. It is not.
I understand that. I'm just wanting to think that that's still.
Yeah. I think, I think that's okay. Yeah. I mean, it's not, it is not the same as the, the actual church logo, but it honors that heritage. And I think that's, I think that's really important.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah. I mean, that's, both Mike and I talked about that. We thought that was, it, that's the heritage of the community.
Mayor, did you, we discussed the three tribes that got to the bottom. That was intriguing for me, the original, well, Native American.
Yeah. It's the, the Native American origins, you know, it, it's hard to say which tribe is which, you know, really this was the Kaius here. Walla Wallas were a little further north, the Yum Tilla's a little further south, but, that, 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 it all ties around the heritage of, of the community and the environment that we're in.
And a lot of that was pulled from a tour that they did with Mike Donnie here a couple of months ago, so.
So I thought they, you know, all, all, all the rationales for the flags were interesting. This just turns out, we, when you, when you tie it all together, this seemed to represent the community well. And, and your observation about, you know, it's going to be looked at, at a distance. So I, I mean, that, that, to your question, like I said, I don't, I didn't see it really as an issue. It's, it's the heritage of the community. So we will bring this back to you on the twenty-eighth. That is, I believe, the end of our formal. That is, I believe, the end of our formal agenda, any, any other items of discussion?
Well update, proceeding?
Paul's gone.
Just a brief, just a brief.
Yeah, they're down at about six hundred and fifty feet into the basalt, another couple hundred feet to go. The last that I heard, they were talking about finished drilling by mid-June.
And then they'll move that rig to the other well side of Maplewood, and then we let the contract for that loop line, as you know, so they're really going to start getting going on that, that goes from large to Pepper's Bridge up McMinn and then back over College. It's going to take a little while to get all of the electrical components for the well house, because all that has to be made to order.
In China.
And, and they don't, they can't, they can't really do it until they reach water and they do that pump test, because they, they have to size everything by how much water has the, the ability to be pumped, and what motor can fully get down there and stuff like that, so there's a lot of moving parts as far as getting to that point of knowing what to order to be sized appropriately in the well house.
One of the questions I'd ask, the intertie, I haven't been bid, but if it occurs this summer, they have tested, I think, a request we had is that that will be tested to see if that works before we need it.
So the, so that, that is going to be tested likely toward the end of this month or very early June, main reason being is that right now, City of Walla Walla, they have the conservation thing in effect, because they're finishing up their water treatment plant, because they went from the old filters to the, it's like, it's like an ozone, it's like a UV thing.
Not like, it is.
Yeah, but, but they need that to be approved by the state, so they're finishing that up in the meantime, before the state approves it, they're on, they're on their own well system right now, and they have brought all their wells on, because some of the other wells that they haven't used in Eon's, I guess, has like a really funky taste to it, so, so right now, they've been conservative until they can bring back on the treatment plant. I've been told their treatment plant, they think the state's going to agree with it to move to that from Little Creek the end of this month, and once they're back online with that, then we can test it. Right now, since they're in this interim period with the wells, it's a bit difficult.
I'm sure we're documenting this, what has happened, this process, so that we know, you know, that we attempted, or we asked, and that they responded as what, you know, I'm, I'm sure we're doing that, I just wanted to.
Oh, I have a whole.
Yeah, yeah, and, right, you know, I'm stating the obvious here, but in case, I, you know, once I didn't want to go there, but, yeah.
I mean, other, other options we have in the meantime is District fourteen, we've always helped each other out, and they have interties in effect, also the new intertie agreement we have with Walla Walla University, that's in effect as well, and they have more ability to actually help us in the summer, because not as many students are around.
I understand, I know.
Yeah, the intertie will not give us the water pressure probably, that's one of the concerns, any intertie may, well, the Walla intertie may not give us water pressure that we need.
From, from, from what I've been told, the reason that they're going to test it under the month is that with the Walla wall intertie, just with the various elevations we have in town, in order to get their water from my river fully at the other end of town, apparently you have to shut off the water tower in order to do that, to allow the pressure go, at least that's what Paul told me.
Yeah.
So there's other things you have to do in our system to get the water to go from A and B, so.
But, you know, the, right, right now, well number two is, is functional and, and working, and I've been, I've been told that unless something dramatic happens, we will be able to get through the summer without, without that, as long as we're careful with what's going on, and you'll start seeing some additional conservation measures being published on. Here, here's what, here's the kinds of things that you need to be thinking about as we go through this. Worse comes to worse, we, we, we have the ability to, to be able to deal with it, but.
Plan B, C, and D.
Yeah, we're down to Plan D. District fourteen is down to one well, and we're going to have to put a new well in, and so that's, it'll, it'll, it'll get interesting this summer if there really is a crisis.
I mean, from, from talking with Paul, I think we can move things around where we would be okay. The, the, the only part that gets interesting, we've notified them of that, is the other districts, the, through the connection with District fourteen, you could argue, would get our water at certain times, like District twelve, which is north of fourteen, because that's a district that actually has no well at the moment, because their well is like closed up, and I mean, they've been told we're in a situation, you know, our citizens come first in that case, so.
Mike, the farmer's market?
Yes.
Do you have an update on how many vendors we have or anything?
We have, if, I've got four more that have contacted me, but I don't have their applications yet, that will put us at thirty.
What do you have last year?
That came on a regular, I mean, we had fifty-four that came throughout the season, but they came on a regular basis around twenty to twenty-five, so.
That's great.
We're there.
Are most of them, like, produce vendors, or the just?
We have a really good mix.
Okay. Good work, thank you.
It's filing week, for those of you.
Sorry.
Please don't forget, is there a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
It's been, it's been moved by Ms. Dahin and seconded by Mr. Peterson, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. We are adjourned, thank you.
I do want to recognize that Heather was the first to get.
Who was the first in the whole county to get her candidacy.